I get everyone's attention in just a couple of minutes before six, but we have our invitation prior to our meeting. And tonight I asked Andy Peake at First Baptist Church to come and do our invitation. Andy is on the ministerial staff at First Baptist. And I thought it was appropriate because First Baptist Church actually adopts McKinley and works hand in hand with many of the teachers here and does a lot of work here at the school. So Andy, if you would come and lead us in our prayer, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you, Ernie. We are certainly proud of McKinley Elementary School, Kate Conner, and the faculty here. And we're glad this meeting is here today. We are thankful for this school, the families represented here. Let's pray together. Father, this evening, we are so grateful for the leadership that our school board gives us. We pray that you guide them tonight as they will go about their appointed tasks. We pray that you give them wisdom and discernment and give them wise counsel as they make determinations that they have. We are grateful for the time and energy that they give. And we pray for them and pray for this school as well, the families, the children, the teachers, administrators that are involved. We pray, Father, that you give them physical energy and that you provide for them in all of their needs. These things we pray. We ask you, Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you, Andy. With that said, I will call the meeting in order. Amber, would you lead us through the presentations and recognitions, please?
Yes. The ROTC can receive.
Oh, the ROTC is going to do the... Okay, they are back there in the corner. So please stand for the presentation code. Left face. Three, go. Our flag will be lifted.
To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Close, go. Three, left arms. Order of arms. Left face. Order of march. Okay, lift. And I would like to say a word of thanks to the ROTC who is always here every meeting to help us with that. So hopefully you hear that.
Well, we're going to start this evening with our American Education Week celebration. This is a very special time for our district and public schools across the country because this is the week that we celebrate, in particular, our students and the educators who make public education possible. And we'd like to begin by asking Dr. Joyce to read the proclamation for American Education Week.
All right. Thank you, Amber. And as she said, November 16th through the 22nd is American Education Week. And I'd like to read you the proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader educational abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas education employees, be they substitute educators, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism; and whereas schools encourage community, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and legislative officials in a common enterprise. Now, therefore, we... This is actually from you. The Board President of our school board, Ernie Courier, does hereby proclaim November 16th through the 22nd as the annual observance of American Education Week. And we want to certainly say thank you to all of the educators in Enid Public Schools. And we also have one student representative from each of our campuses that we're going to get to hear from this evening. And Amber, I'll turn it over to you for that.
Great. We have several things that we do to celebrate American Education Week each year. We're very fortunate that we partner with the Enid Education Association for different activities. You'll meet our poster contest winners tonight. But another tradition is hosting a student from every school at our board meeting during the Week of American Ed. And I have been told year after year, I believe this is our 13th year, that this board meeting is the favorite board meeting for board members. So we have 8,081 reasons why we do what we do every day, and 17 of them are here with us tonight to tell us about the great things about their school. And one special thing is our first student is from Carver. So we're so happy to welcome our friends from Carver Early Childhood Center, not just to the district, but to this tradition as well. So he is going to start this.
What is your name? Where do you go to school, Trayman?
Carver.
What is your favorite thing about Carver?
We sit in eight centers.
Thank you.
My name is Simon Haddup. I go to Adams Elementary. I like Adams because the teachers are very nice and we get to work on our laptops.
My name is Esther Doggedale and I'll be representing Coolidge Elementary. Hello. My name is Esther Doggedale and I am the Student Council President of Coolidge Elementary. There are many reasons why I love being a student at Coolidge. For example, we have great teachers that care about us and help us learn throughout the years. We also have fun activities such as fundraisers, assemblies, and holiday events. We also have great student council members that help lead our school. The student council members are trying to make this school year a successful year for our school. Our students are well behaved and are always willing to learn. I would like to thank all of the teachers at Coolidge for all their hard work and support. I would also like to say thank you to our principal, Ms. Cruz, for all she does for our school and for giving me this opportunity to share with you how much I love Coolidge. We are one school, one team. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ella. I'm representing Eisenhower School. Eisenhower Eagles don't allow or act like bullies. And we also have high expectations to meet our goals.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Layton and I go to Garfield Elementary School. And I just want to say I love going to Garfield Elementary because wherever I am, I feel welcome because everyone is so kind and cheerful, which makes a great environment to be in.
My name is Madison Nichols. I go to Glenwood Elementary. And one thing about Glenwood is the staff is caring and another is... It's a fun learning environment.
My name is Lake Navyans. I'm in Mrs. John Doe's 5th grade class at Hayes Elementary. My favorite thing about Hayes is the teachers that make learning fun. I'm also grateful for my school support and staff. They do a great job at keeping the school a safe and clean environment.
Hi, my name is Sean Taylor. I am from Hoover Elementary. I have been at that school for about seven years, pre-k and 5th grade. It's a great school because it cares for special needs children and regular children. They try to teach the special needs children and they also try to help the children in wheelchairs to walk. Our principal is a national distinguished principal. Her name is Mrs. Heiser. She is not a usual principal. For an example, she said she would take me out for a special lunch right before my surgery. By the way, I am a special needs child myself. My disabilities are scoliosis, osteoporosis, and osteodysal fibrompectia. The teachers are very helpful while teaching. They teach us tricks and play games. Our school is a National Ribbon School of 2012. We also have great parents in our school. My mom is a parent for Amanda Cruz. She is also a special needs teacher.
Hi, I am Joseph Bamberg and I am from McKinley's 5th grade. Why I like McKinley is because we get to use great technology.
My name is Kuli Nairhart. I'm a 4th grader at Monroe Elementary in Miss Hybrew's class. I started going to Monroe when I was in 1st grade. At first, I used to get in a lot of trouble and was sent to the office. But as I get older, I know that it is more important to do well in school because I want to be a pharmacist when I grow up. My favorite science... My favorite subject is science because I love to do experiments. I'll need to learn about science to be a good pharmacist like my dad. Monroe teachers are awesome. I will go to Waller in a couple of years, but I don't want to leave my home at Monroe.
Hello, my name is Amy Crawford and I'm in 5th grade at Review. I like Review because the teachers are nice and the students teach each other with respect. I also like the new equipment and books. Overall, Review is a fun place to go to school.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jersey Garrett from Taffed Elementary School. I'm in 5th grade and we work really hard so we can be prepared for middle school. The teachers, kids, and the school itself are one big happy family. Something we are currently doing right now is something called speed stacking. If you don't know what speed stacking is, it's an international team sport that involves stacking plastic cups in a specific pattern in a small amount of time. Also, we have done a Veterans Day program. We all honored those who died for our country. During the Week of Halloween, it was Red Ribbon Week. We did something every day of the week to celebrate being drug free. Monday was dressed like a twin day. You had to pick a friend and dress like them. Tuesday was dressed like a superhero. All you had to do was dress like a hero. Even though this character is not a hero, I dressed like a hero. Wednesday was dressed in camouflage. You got to wear camo all day. Thursday was wear sunglasses to school. Someone in my class wore a jacket with a whole bunch of glasses pinned to it. Friday was Halloween. You wore your costume to school. And to keep it with Red Ribbon Week, you had to wear stuff right under your costume. Drug Free Week was a blast. We also started our own TNN network at Taffed. I am actually one of the TNN anchors on Tuesday. This means that every morning, we do a short news report on the day's event on the smartboard for all the students to watch. It is fun being on camera. So as you can see, we are doing lots of neat things at Taffed. I love being a Taffed teacher.
Hello, and I'm Mary Fitzgerald and I'm an 8th grader from Emerson Middle School. Emerson is a place full of opportunities. Opportunities to be a leader, opportunities to show your intelligence and talent, opportunities to make friends, and opportunities to create yourself. Every day, Emerson pushes us to be the best that we can be and to be a leader. Emerson's teachers are a perfect example of leaders. They are patient, considerate, and kind. Hopefully, students recognize that. I'm a part of the student council at Emerson. And about a week ago, the student council got to go to a social conference and more. We learned many things there, like how we need to listen to each other, that we can't do something alone, and that we need to show responsibility. We could have learned so much without Emerson. So in conclusion, I love Emerson because Emerson will help me open the door to my future. Thank you.
My name is Randy Diaz. Thanks for inviting me here tonight. I'm a 7th grader at Longfellow Middle School. I'm here to tell you how truly stupendous Longfellow is. Longfellow has many talented students and amazing teachers. Our teachers never let us down. They help us acknowledge strengths and talents we're never going to have. They want us to succeed in school and also more, I mean, succeed in life as well, in life. Longfellow has many talented student athletes as well. We excel in football, volleyball, basketball, and track. However, we also have a large variety of students who are very talented and extremely interested in playing the world's most popular sport, soccer. The students at Longfellow would really appreciate it if you would consider supporting this middle school sponsored soccer team, just like we have with other sports. The interest in soccer continues to expand and are ever going to make me creating a middle school soccer program that will allow a magnitude... Allow a magnitude of students who are currently uninvolved to participate in extracurricular activities. Studies show that students should let kids who are uninvolved get better grades, have better attendance, and stay out of trouble. Please consider creating a middle school soccer program for Enid Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is McKenna Chatterjee and I'm an 8th grader at Waller Middle School. This is my second year at Waller because from pre-k through 6th, I attended a private Montessori school here in Enid. Even though I had a great education at Seminole Montessori, I was excited about going to Waller because I was ready to grow up and experience new things. On my first day, I was nervous, but my teachers went out of their way to make me feel comfortable and welcome. For example, Miss Eldor, the band teacher, allowed me to play in band even though I had never done it before because it wasn't offered at my other schools. In science, I really enjoyed doing the hands-on opportunities like dissecting worms and crawdads and other stuff. The highlight of my years was when I found out that my teachers had nominated me to become a National Junior Honor Society. Doing this allowed me to have more opportunities to be a leader at my school and it gave me more self-confidence in myself. Recently, we did Red Ribbon Week at school and we put together a video that we played at the assemblies on Monday. We went up on the stage and spoke, and I don't think I would have been able to do it without National Junior Honor Society. I am glad that I chose Enid Public Schools and I look forward to all that the high school has to offer, including the University Center in Soccer for Waller.
Hello, I'm Katie McGrath. I'm a senior at Enid High School. And at Enid High School, you want to think about, we have a lot to offer. Any student can do just about anything and whatever kind of personality you have, you can find something that fits you, like there's band, there's all different kinds of music, there's any type of athletic under the sun, there's even a ski team. There's ROTC, those guys that are up here, there's all different kinds of stuff. There's even, you can find any kind of educational program to help you if you want to excel in education or if you need some help, there's anything at Enid High. And I just love that we have all these different programs to offer at the high school. And right now, there's the UC, which is brand new and that offers for students like myself who want to excel in AP classes and classes as such. And there's just so much to offer and I just love that about Enid High. And I never thought that when I first got to Enid High that there would be all of these opportunities. And that's what I love about Enid High. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Swanner and I'm here representing Lincoln Academy. I will be a senior, actually, I am a senior, sorry. I'm graduating next May. And I am really proud to be a senior at Lincoln Academy, especially considering my sister also graduated from Lincoln Academy. And she is currently enrolled in NOC and will be graduating with her associates in business. I was given the opportunity to graduate from Lincoln Academy because I spent a year abroad as an exchange student and ambassador for the United States in Japan as a high school exchange student when I was 16 years old. And due to that, I would not be receiving enough credits to graduate on time with the rest of my class at Enid High School. And so because my sister went to Lincoln, Mr. Hellman, the principal at Lincoln, he said, "Well, hey, you can come on down here and we'll get you set up and get you graduated on time." And boy, that helped me a lot because without Lincoln, I would not be graduating on time and I would be hailed back and would not have the credits that I do have because just like Katie McGrath said, I'm also enrolled at the University Center at Enid High School where I have been taking two classes the first semester and two classes the second semester. So I'll be graduating not only with a full diploma from Lincoln Academy, also with 12 credits towards my college education. Thank you.
Before we move on to some other American Education Week activities, I want to say thank you to the parents and to the siblings who are here. So when I ask for a round of applause for these amazing students, we're asking for you as well. So please help me honor these students again. It's okay, we're going to go ahead and receive with the recognition, okay? And because there are so many things that we do to celebrate this special week, we are fortunate that we partner with the Enid Education Association. At this time, I'm going to introduce Rhonda Stewart and Lori Miles, who are here to recognize our poster contest winners, including this young lady who's joined me here at the podium. She's our first winner.
Well, my name's Rhonda Stewart. I'm a special ed teacher at Monroe Elementary. And my cohort is Lori Miles and she's from Hayes. And this is kind of, this is a real privilege to come up here and see these leaders that we get to... They go through our classroom, but we don't ever get to see how we affect these little ones. This is what we're here for, these little ones. It's kind of exciting. So good job, leaders. We like to see that. Also, like to see all the parents that are involved in the different activities we're doing. We get to see the parents that are behind the leaders. That's a really good thing to get to see, too. First, we have, and National American Education Week is important. This is the second year that I've done it as an EA member, and it's not just a thing that we do. I really think it is important to talk about education and know what the importance is of the education and be able to help these children with success and also to help them through failures so that we can guide them into being productive citizens later. So with that, we're going to go ahead and present our winners.
I just want to say thank you to all of the students across Enid Schools and that participated in the contest. We had a lot of entries and it was a hard decision for our judges, I know. Our first winner tonight is going to be... Rihanna Gray. And she was our winner in pre-k to 2nd grade entry. And the winning students get their poster printed. They're on these really nice posters that will be displayed throughout all of the schools and different places throughout the community. And they're also receiving a $30 check. And so our next winner is Isabella Giambra and she was our 3rd through 5th grade winner.
There was a lot of really talented poster makers in this contest and that was exciting to see because I can't do anything like that. So that was really exciting to see such good talent from these guys. Our next winner is for the middle school, Lillian Keifer. And for the high school is Morgan Klein. Hers is amazing. That was a lot of work that she put into that. It was really, really good. Good job. Thank you for all of you that entered our contest and just keep going for your goals. Thank you.
Yeah, two more recognitions this evening. Our next recognition is really someone who's going to share with us about a wonderful, outstanding honor she recently received. It is Karen Heiser, who is the National Distinguished Principal for the State of Oklahoma. And I'm going to ask Mr. Rader to tell us just a little bit about her recognition.
All right, I'm going to bring Karen up here. But Karen was recognized, basically, the National Distinguished Principal is the Principal of the Year in Oklahoma and for all of the elementary schools. So Karen nominated her last year, knowing really that the only thing that might keep her from winning was the fact that Enid pretty much swept all of the other state recognitions the same year. We had the Special Ed Director of the Year, the Middle School Principal of the Year. And so I knew as soon as I nominated her, she was a shoe-in unless they were just like, "We're not going to recognize another Enid person." But it was a no-brainer and they come and they visit the school when they make this selection. And they said, once they saw Hoover Elementary School, there was no doubt about what their selection was. As a matter of fact, they called me probably five or 10 minutes after they left the school and they said, "Go tell her because this is good stuff." So Karen come on and she got to take a special trip as well with that recognition. And I want her to tell you just a little bit about that.
Well, thank you for inviting me here this evening. The trip, the recognition, was in Washington DC. It was the week of our fall break, October 11th through the 19th. We were two blocks from the White House at the Capitol Hilton where all the grand events happened. So it was very, very exciting and very, very fancy. Lots of glitz. There were 62 National Distinguished Principals there, one from each state, plus private and parochial schools were represented. The event started at the Congressional Country Club. That was very, very wonderful. You walked in and it just was a wow experience. There, we met other National Distinguished Principals from our zones and it helped navigate our weekly... and it helped navigate our weekly events. One of the things that I learned about Washington DC, that they are very visual learners. They had pictures up of everything that was happening, all the events had strong pictorials, and we all submitted our pictures for our National Distinguished Principal Award, and they were everywhere. So by the first day, you pretty much knew almost all the distinguished principals. So that made it very great that you could quickly identify them. That event was followed by all the National Distinguished Principals taking turns to talk about their success in their schools, their best practice, and what it was that really made them effective leaders. So listening to each one of them was such a great experience, and seeing really from across the country, across the nation, that all principals had some very similar stories, and they had very similar challenges in reaching and teaching all our children. We all gathered at the White House one day, and we were taking the class picture for the, what they called us the Class of 2014, our National Distinguished Principal Class of 2014. We all stood in front of the White House. The security at the White House is greatly changed in the past few years. And you can't get up as close to it as you used to. You will remember, the runner was there the week before I was. So the security was very intense. The photographer, who was going to take the picture, when he pulled the tripod out to take our picture, they tackled him to the ground because he did not have a permit to have a tripod. So they were on their toes. There were bikes and horses with security. It was, they weren't gonna let somebody else get on the grounds or have anything that might threaten the security of the White House. So that was worth a ticket. It was very exciting, and he learned that he had to go get a permit, so we later took the picture. The really exciting thing that happened by meeting all these wonderful principals was that prior to our trip, each National Distinguished Principal was asked to submit a packet of best practices and reflective information that we thought made leadership powerful. And it took a lot of work and reflective thinking and looking at not only Hoover, but Enid Public Schools. And what's happened in my time here, I was a teacher at Greenwood for nine years, a principal at Eisenhower Elementary for seven, and now I've been at Hoover for 11 years. So I am a product of Enid Public Schools. I have grown up through the system. And the best practices that I have grown to know and love have, you know, made me the principal and the leader and the instructional person I am today. As we submitted those packets, they are putting a booklet together for us to share on a national and state level. But an exciting thing that happened was they picked six states to be interviewed by an ABC affiliate. And it is called Principal Perspectives. It will be the feature in a National Elementary Principals Association Conference in Long Beach, California. And I'm excited to tell you that Hoover, Enid, Oklahoma, was selected as one of the six to be interviewed by the ABC affiliate. It was so exciting to meet the person who did the interview because he was familiar with Oklahoma, and he had been out here to interview the, through a tragedy, which was the Moore tornado. The best practice that they found in my packet that they wanted to feature was Rise and Shine assemblies and our pep rallies for learning that we do every morning. And going to Washington, again, I say, it wasn't just about Hoover. It was about Enid Public Schools for me, and it was about the state of Oklahoma because you are there representing best practices for Oklahoma. And just to know that how many elementary principals I sit with every week, every month, and we talk about what we do in Rise and Shine Assembly. We share music, we share how we get it all in, and what's most important to feature during that time. And to say that that got selected, I can tell you every elementary principal in Enid is using some form of Rise and Shine and modifying it to fit there on campus. So Enid Public Schools will get that feature. The other exciting event that happened was we met Jill Levine, who is a policy advisor for the US Department of Education head, who is Arnie Duncan. And we sat in roundtable discussions and breakout sessions. She is the official policy advisors for principals across the country. And we talked about how students need education for their transition to college and what that might look like. But we also talked about, as they graduate as educators in college, what it, what they need and what it looks like to come back into the real world. And we're not just having shortages of teachers in Enid, Oklahoma. We're having shortages all across the United States. We're not able to retain and keep our teachers that are coming out of education today. And what, we talked in great length about how to promote that and how to make education and teachers, the career of teacher, something that they want to do, that they want for their future. We also, in that roundtable discussion, we talked about the balance of testing and educating the whole child. What's most important? And how do we balance all the testing with what we're doing for the whole child? Another big component of that was the principal pipeline and networking. They, we all shared programs that are in existence about helping other principals new coming into the career and how we have mentor programs for our principals. It's not just throw them in and sink or swim. And out of that discussion, I got a lot of great ideas and things that Mr. Rader and I, I want to share with him soon. But it's just great to hear all the things they're doing across the country to build positive leadership in our schools. The other great thing that happened was the professional development that they provided to us over two days. Janine Driver works for the US Department of Education or US Department of Justice. She trains all the CIA and the FBI's, all the careers of law enforcement. She is a scientific-based body language expert. She has a couple of books out called You Can't Lie To Me or You Say More Than You Think. And it's about reading body language and learning to communicate with our parents and our teachers and just our learning community. The thing that I loved about it was she saw us as educators, and she taught us how to have just casual conversations with students. And in just a few minutes, we can identify whether they're visual, auditory, or kinesthetic. And sometimes, we spend so much time trying to figure that out in the classroom, that I'm very anxious and excited to share that as a professional development. But she was dynamite and learned lots of great things that, again, I want to share. The grand finale of the week was the night of the awards and the formal ball. Ice sculptures, gowns, and tuxes, and seven-course meal, and all the awards. We all got these great bells with the US seal of education on it. And to conclude the evening, we all raised the bells and rang the bells in support of education in our great country. It was just a grand event. I want to say thank you to our Central Office Administration for your support. I want to say thank you to our COSA and our National NADSPs for their support. And we also had people there from Oklahoma that were there in support of Oklahoma. In closing, on reflecting on all that wonderful week in DC, there were so many outstanding things and so much happening all the time that when I had the time to think about the week and the reflection of it, I concluded that what, what I learned from there is that one needs to think like a hero. Who can I help today? And one needs to be an inventor. What else can I try? If this isn't working, what else can I try? And one needs to refuse to be ordinary. Pursue your excellence, set your high standards, and achieve it. But the last and probably most powerful is to celebrate, but take no credit. It is all of us that make Enid Public Schools work. It is our children who love their school and love their principals and love their teachers. And we've got some great best practice going on here, and it was great to go and brag and share about it in Washington DC. And I am quite sure that everybody across this country will be doing Rise and Shine and celebrate learning in their morning activities. So thank you for the invitation this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Heiser. Mrs. Heiser mentioned the importance of being a hero, which is actually what we're going to celebrate next. We have two very special people who are with us this evening. Jacob Pearson and Julianne Hellman. And I am going to have Mr. Beauchamp tell you a little bit about why they are heroes. But we are certainly proud of them and want to recognize their bravery and courage this evening. Mr. Beauchamp?
Thank you, everyone. Just briefly, want to introduce Jacob and Julianne. Here a couple of weeks ago, I was in the conference room, and one of our teachers broke in and said, "I need to see you right now." And I said, "Okay," and I stepped up and she goes, "You need to come to the office." And we just happened in the office and got down there, and they were in there. And one of our secretaries was eating lunch, didn't take a lunch break, of course, was eating her lunch. And it became aware to Jacob that she was choking. She was choking on her lunch. He noticed it right away, immediately responded, and began performing the Heimlich maneuver on her. And if you guys know anything about all of our offices, there's a glass divider between our counselor's office and Julianne came around the corner around her office and saw Tyler and Mrs. Johnston. She dropped her stuff and ran around the corner and proceeded to take over for Tyler and finished the maneuver successfully and saved a life that day. The great thing about it, these are, these are two very, very worthy people, but they're also two very humble people that never put themselves in the spotlight. So I feel really good that they were able to receive some of these recognitions for their behavior. The Enid Fire Department has came by and given them some very nice plaques and certificates. The Police Department has came by and done the same thing. Our nurse and her staff in Enid Public Schools also have rewarded them a commendation. But the other great thing about it, that they've been able to do some education about the Heimlich maneuver and some of those life-saving practices from that. So Tyler and Julianne, I'll let you guys just say a little bit if you want to.
I'd like to thank everyone, including the Board of Education, to recognize me and Mrs. Kane for our heroic actions. And currently, me and some of the nurses at the schools are doing a presentation on the Heimlich maneuver and how important it is to someone's life if they are choking.
I would also like to thank everybody for the recognition, for Jake and myself. And it's been wonderful to just be recognized for something that, you know, most people, I would hope that most people would do, just whenever you see somebody choking. So I just want to say that Jake, though, he's amazing, and he's the first one that got to her. And I think that most kids in that kind of a situation might have froze up, but he immediately stepped up and helped save Mrs. Johnston's life. So, thank you.
Board members, you have a Heimlich maneuver first aid sheet at your place. I thought, if you're not very familiar with that, you might want to take that home with you and learn a little bit about it, just in case you're ever called upon to do what these two have done so successfully. And it's not Tyler, it's Jake. Tyler's the dad. Tyler's the dad. Jake's the dad, works for us in the IT department. And Jake, we want to say a great job to both of you. And a lot of us would hope that we would do the same thing if we were in your shoes. So, great job.
I think that's the end of our presentation. I don't know why, but this is the point that our group usually empties out. Y'all are certainly welcome to stay for the whole meeting. It's raining. Yeah, I think the next item on the agenda is our consent, well, actually, the next item on the agenda is, uh, just patient, and there's no one signed up for your speech, so we will move on to the consent items.
What members, we were gonna shoot some pictures up on the screen for you while Karen was talking, but when you get the technology hooked up and tied, we'll do have some pictures of her trip to Washington DC. So I'll start over here with Tori, and then work our way around while we're doing some other items.
I think I'm correct in assuming that on the consent items, we can do anything that falls under four A.
Correct.
So with that said, it's motion to approve consent item.
Motion approved.
Second? Any discussions of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. We bring justice 4B and general fund encumbrances. Carl, you can walk us through some of these.
General fund encumbrances, including purchase orders 1690 through 1793 in the amount of $175,748.24. Recommend approval of these obligations.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of these items? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on.
General fund change orders for purchase orders 1 through 1689 since the 13th of October in the amount of $35,794.59. Recommend approval of these obligations.
Motion approved. Second?
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 4B, three building fund encumbrances.
Purchase orders 59 through 63 in Fund 21 for a total of $21,503.99. Recommend approval of these obligations.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these items?
Where did the whiteboard material, the whiteboard itself, or?
Actually, the materials go on top of the old slate chalkboards, which are located in Adams Elementary. But before we can put the new material on there, we have to take some old material off, and that will have to be done right after school is out. So this is buying the material and contracting with the company that will apply it, but we'll be responsible for taking it home.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial reporting. Financial reporting, Mr. White?
As I'm walking around here giving Phyllis her copy, I apologize, I wasn't waiting for you at your desk. Call your attention to the one-page summary, which is the detailed version of the second page. Anyone care for a printed copy of the details? The one-line summary was sent out in the electronic packet. Just a real quick overview of each fund of the $58,727,000 round numbers that is appropriated and estimated by our County Excise Board. For the general fund, we have thus far collected $19,769,000. We've obligated in the form of encumbrances $53,820,000. And we have issued payments for goods received and services rendered of just under $13 million, leaving us a current cash balance at the end of October of $6.7 million. That's, of course, our general operating fund. In the building fund, we've collected $1.8 million and we've obligated about $800,000. We do have a current cash balance of about a million and a half in that fund. In Fund 25, which is the municipal tax levy fund, those are excess sales tax collections that we are accumulating and using for building projects. We've collected $1.2 million and at this point, we've obligated only about $30,000, none of which the work has been completed, so we haven't made any payments on that as of yet. In Fund 38, that is our general obligation, lease payment bond fund. What we are paying back to the authority that funded the vast majority of our improvements in the three-year capital improvement plan. We've collected $6,032,000 and we've paid out $6,029,000. And then, as you can see in the sinking fund, we haven't collected, of course, much of anything other than the fund balance from last year. So, of that 5.9 million and estimated, we've only collected about $380,000. That money will all come in with property taxes starting in January and the last payments will probably be received in about April. The permanent endowment fund, sitting with $478,000. We, of course, spend only the interest earnings on that fund. Most of that is tied up in scholarship trusts. And then, just to recap of the Garfield County Education Facilities Authority, of the $66.483 million, we have obligated $65.9 million for an unencumbered balance of about $22,000. So, and by the way, down in yellow in the corner, we have received of the $3.4 million in private donations for our capital improvement plan, $3.315 million in those donations have actually been received. So, this is a quick overview. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. If not, I would add a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Did I hear a second? Thank you. Any further discussion about financial reporting? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on with contracts and I should have Mr. White and let me through those two.
We have two contracts this evening. One is an affiliation agreement with Northwestern Oklahoma State University to allow clinical observations and experiences for nursing students in our schools. I've talked with Jody McIntyre, our Director of Nursing, and she very much approves of this contract. We've been doing it for a number of years, so we are recommending approval of allowing these student nurses to work in our facilities and observe our nurses in action.
Before we get to the motion there, we do have, how many students from Northwestern here with us tonight? All right, we're glad to have y'all on from the head leadership program, right? All right, we're glad to have y'all on.
Was this required attendance? Do we have a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Make that mention.
I did. I have a question. So, we've been doing this about six years now?
Yes.
Have we ever had any of those student nurses, once they've finished the program, ended up working for the district in any nursing capacity?
I don't believe so. Okay, we have at this point.
How many nurses do we have total?
We have seven, I believe.
So, not a...
Right. Not a high turnover position.
And most of those people have been with us a number of years. Fortunately, it's an area that we're not experiencing a large shortage.
Where does Jody office out of? Out of Harrisonburg?
And when we move next door to that new building, all of the Harrison folks are moving into Harrisonburg.
Got you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next one is with American Fidelity.
American Fidelity is an Oklahoma-based corporation that provides a large number of insurance benefits and investment instruments for public educators that kind of specialize in assisting public education. They have, in response to many of the requests from school administrators to provide assistance in doing some of the tracking and calculation that's required by the Affordable Health Care Act, also known as Obamacare, they have formed a limited liability corporation called American Fidelity Administrative Services. We have viewed the presentations regarding the services that they offer. School districts and large employers are required to offer health insurance benefits to anyone that works an average of 30 or more hours a week. And because of the fact that some of our substitute teachers vary significantly in the number of hours that they work per week, and in fact, some of our miscellaneous support employees that may work more than one job, may work in some weeks more than others. We're faced with the difficult task of tracking the hours that these people work and trying to make certain that if they do, on the average, exceed that 30 hours per week, that we have offered health insurance benefits to them. The penalties can be rather severe. And the penalty is not calculated on the number of employees that you fail to offer the insurance to, it's calculated on the total number of employees. And it's basically a 12th of $3,000 per month per employee, which is 166, 67 an employee. A quick calculation shows that it could cost our district, if we were penalized, $152,000 per month. So, it is in our interest to make certain that we're tracking this accurately so that when we report this to the IRS, which is, by the way, the enforcement agency on the Affordable Health Care Act, that we're absolutely providing enough documentation to show that we did our due diligence. So, the purpose of this contract is to develop a relationship with the new corporation that American Fidelity has formed to provide these services to public schools. The cost for a one-time setup is $795,000. And then, we have a monthly fee of 65 cents per employee or approximately, for our size district, about $650 a month. To me, this is a very worthwhile investment. They've already broken the ground to be able to take information out of both our personnel system and our payroll system to help us track this information. So, highly recommend approval of this contract with American Fidelity Administrative Services so that we can be confident that what we report to the IRS will pass muster, so to speak. Kind of a long speech for, I feel very strongly that we need to utilize their services.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will move that we approve.
Second?
I'll second so I can ask some questions.
Yes, me too.
Okay. Can someone define for me what the federal definition of look-back period is?
It's basically a year that we choose a 12-month period. It'll be the 2015 year for Enid Public Schools.
And how do we currently track employees and the hours they work?
Well, it's all captured in payroll, but we don't have a way to report that to the IRS in the format that they're accustomed to receiving. We have the information embedded in our payroll system, but no way to really pull it out in terms of the hours that it works. We use time sheets rather than a time clock, and so it's pretty complex.
And I'm assuming we're speaking, for the most part, hourly employees?
Yes.
So, when they come to work, do they have to clock in in some way?
There's no...
There's no, we have no program to say when...
We're working on a time clock program, but we would never use one.
For any employee?
No, sir.
Time sheets, but...
Time sheets.
Sheets, right.
A time sheet that's filled out at the end of whatever paper we're looking at saying we think they worked in.
Well, no, they fill it out and then their supervisor approves it and then we collect that and that's it.
But there's no timestamp for each individual day or anything like that?
There isn't.
What has been the hold-up on something like that, the initial investment?
Uh, the initial investment plus employee morale and attitude.
Towards clocking in?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Rather than filling out a time sheet?
Correct.
Well, I would think you convey the message, we're just making sure, we want to pay you for the work that you perform.
We are exploring some options for that that'll change that. And it will provide an opportunity to greatly reduce the amount of work that my staff does.
Another question I had in reading through the contract, I noticed we offer indemnification to this company. Is that a standard practice for the district?
Depends on the relationship between the district and the company. If we're, for example, leasing a facility to someone else, it might indemnify them for any defects in the property. They are concerned about the accuracy of the records that we provide. And then, of course, we're concerned about the accuracy of the computer program that they're going to use to input and massage that data and provide it to the IRS.
If I'm remembering correctly, reading through the contract, if one employee for this LLC were to, say, have gross negligence in releasing records or something like that, that breaks us of the contract at that time, correct?
There probably is a significant labor cost involved in calculating all those time sheets in there. Oh, yes, there is. That might be paid for. Right. That's why we're looking at a time clock program. And this is something that many school districts are moving towards, but it's not uncommon for school districts in our state to utilize time sheets rather than time clocks.
But it's your staff's state business.
Oh, it's a major, I mean, you're talking a stack about this high every month.
And this will be just like every other contract we enter to where we have to, every year?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's not a continuing thing. We would have to renew it next year.
Carl?
There's a good chance that some of the federal requirements may change, but currently, this is what we're facing.
So, you're saying if we do this, that they're going to do all the tracking? I couldn't hear much of what you all were saying over there.
They are going to extract data from our two main software systems. One is the personnel system that writes contracts and the other is the payroll system that takes the hours that are input and computes the paycheck. So, they'll extract data out of both of those systems and convert it into a format that the IRS is going to want to see.
And you've estimated how much time our employees will spend on this?
Our employees won't spend very much time.
Very much?
Additional time on this at all. They've plowed the ground, if you will, and worked with the same software vendors that we use for our payroll and personnel systems. And are able to utilize that data. There'll be some setup time, but my payroll accountant, my business office manager are very pleased with this and feel like it's going to be a good tool for us to meet the requirements that act currently, that is, the Affordable Health Care Act.
I'm glad that we have a good way to meet these requirements, but I am so angry that Obamacare is costing us, is taking away any money that we would otherwise have to put into our instructional program. I am absolutely really upset that we must do this in order to avoid some penalties. And this just really, really hit me because, you know, as you said, in the information you sent us, it's very difficult to track these when they're short-term and might work a little bit here and a little bit there. And then, it's to avoid these huge penalties.
I might add that Amber and I have discussed at some length the things that we can do to try to minimize our exposure. For example, we had a large number of food service workers that were on a five-hour-a-day contract. And if one of their workers was ill, they might be required to work an additional hour or two, which on the average would throw them over. So, we made the decision nearly a year ago to encourage our food service director to place all these people on 30-hour-a-week contracts. In other words, give them an additional hour a day and there's plenty for them to do and then offer them benefits to minimize the number of these that we have to do these calculations on. But still, there's a risk and the risk is pretty severe when you look at how the penalty is calculated, which really galls me. It should be the opposite. We should be penalized for the ones we miss, not the total of the...
Right.
But that's not the way the act was written. It was really, in my opinion, sort of editorializing here, but it was written to extract as much money from employers as possible to help fund the whole program. It didn't matter to them whether it was a public entity like us or a private corporation. Those penalties are pretty heavy. But that's how it's partially coming, in my opinion.
If we were to enter into this contract and IRS doesn't like what gets sent, does us entering into this contract limit our exposure or does it still fall completely back on the district?
It'll fall completely back on the district. I think what would happen is the company would work on our behalf to try to reformulate the information so that the IRS finds a more acceptable, but...
Do we have any recourse with the company if that happens?
Not do business with them again.
Is this what other schools are doing?
This is about the only game out right now for public schools that I'm aware of.
When we decided to go this way, though, how did we make the comparison? I mean, have we determined that this would take a full-time person to do this? Is it going to take half of an employee's time to do this? I mean, how did we make the comparison on what it's costing us to go with this outsourced versus what would cost us to do? And understand the penalties, not just the cost to do this.
Well, this is a fraction of the cost of an employee. We're right at the cusp of needing an additional employee in my department anyway.
Did you say about 600 a month?
Yeah, 650.
Yeah, that's pretty negative. Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, is this something it would take one full-time employee to do?
To be able to do it, I would have to have a staff member.
With our current way of tracking?
Right, right. And it might be that we would be able to handle it better if we had a time clock setup, which is something that we're working towards, but that's something that we haven't had the time yet to implement.
Well, I'm not going to speak for the others, but one of the issues you called and asked, some of the questions I wanted to ask about it, because I don't like to outsource just to outsource. And you've answered some of the questions about it, really doesn't protect... protect us. I mean, we, we might have an employee that would do just as good a job as they're doing because that, it doesn't really protect us to go, to go to them. So that's my concern, is just to outsource just because it might help us, you know? I, I just want to be sure that we're spending our money wisely and, uh, that it, it's giving us the most bang for our buck on the dollars we have, so.
Well, I see it as an insurance policy. We don't have anyone currently with the expertise to do this, and the, the timeframe that it's going to have to be done within is rapidly approaching. We've been trying to track the requirements of the Affordable Healthcare Act for, for a year or two now, but as the, the deadline to get this process started looms, um, we just don't, I, I, my staff physically does not have the time to do this nor the expertise to, uh, to put it together in a format that the IRS is going to ask for, so.
Do you, if we do this for a one-year term, do you know of any federal legislation that, I mean, probably it's way too early to ask this, but, uh, do you foresee a possibility of something legislatively that would help us with this?
I think there's a good possibility that there'll be some things introduced in this next session that could, could relieve us of some of this. In fact, there's a potential Supreme Court decision that may torpedo the whole system if, if the ability to, to get the discounts in states that don't have a state-run, uh, healthcare-
Yeah.
Exchange.
Exchange, yeah, that's what I was looking for. Then states like Oklahoma, those, the people won't get the discount because we don't have a state exchange, we have a federal exchange.
Yeah.
And if that, that will change the ballgame dramatically, so, uh, currently, these requirements are out there and we're not able to meet them without some help. This is just a one-year contract, and, you know, if, if something changes at the federal level that, that removes this requirement, obviously, we're not going to do it again.
And it's cheaper than adding an additional employee?
Much cheaper. It's the most economical way to accomplish what right now has to be under current law, and I can't predict how that law will change. I'm hopeful that there'll be significant change and we won't have to do this for very long, but right now, this is, this is the game we have to play, as I see it.
Well, I, I just, pardon me for wanting to clarify, but the, the comment keeps getting made, it's cheaper than adding an employee, but nobody's ever answered my question. Does it take a full-time employee to do this one job?
No, it won't.
Okay.
But to get the job done, we would have to hire another employee because the people I have are pressed to the limit to get the job.
And did I, but, did I, did I remember discussion, though, that after the first year when we moved into the new building, there's some discussion about adding a person to your staff anyway?
Well, we may look at doing that, yes.
Any more discussion on this issue? It is a one-year?
Yes, sir.
Contract? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Can you count three, is that correct? All opposed? I don't hear three ayes, but that, I guess that works, so there weren't any opposed.
You know what, I think this would be a time they might want to have a roll call since, since you're all opposed.
Yeah, just to ensure that, that-
As we heard in our training session, we're supposed to roll call.
We won't do that all the time, but, uh-
Yeah, so, starting on my right, I heard aye?
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye, so we'll try this for a year.
Thank you very much.
Next item is to approve, uh, Mr. White as our authorized representative.
This is for the Oklahoma School Assurance Group, which is the organization, you know, it's a organization specifically for Oklahoma public schools, uh, to purchase workers' compensation insurance. I would simply be the voting representative in the time there were any changes in policy procedures or rules, and the, the bylaws require that the district designate someone. Would appreciate your authorization to be the designated representative for ENEP schools, and this is by position rather than person, so if something was to happen to me, whoever took my place would be the authorized voting representative.
So you're not going to give a campaign speech to run through this?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, new board policy, parent participation.
We had the first reading or first presentation of this policy at our last meeting. Um, we have had no comments, suggestions, or criticism of the new policy. It has remained posted on our front window in our website since the last meeting, so this would be the second and final presentation, and a motion for adoption would be appreciated. This is a required policy.
Did, uh, is there a motion approved?
No, approved.
Give it to Will Jeff. Second, okay? Now I'll ask a question. Has it, did it change?
No, nothing changed.
Nothing changed. It's word for word exactly the way it was presented at the last meeting.
And, and we did not have this prior to this current, it's brand?
Yeah, we have the last legislative session.
But everything I read in here, we-
Yeah, it's-
We, we do anyway.
We had a, a group of parents and patrons and Melanie and Randy were very involved in that process, so we, and we feel like this is a, a good policy.
But I mean, even that policy, I mean, now we just have it in writing on things-
Right, it's really an umbrella policy, it sort of brings all the other things that we've already had together.
If a parent withdraws a, a student from whatever course they deem necessary, is the district required to once again give notice that this could keep that student from meeting the, the needs to graduate?
Absolutely, and, uh, you know, we do regular advisement with our kids anyway, but that would be something that we would do definitely because it could endanger, you know, a student from not receiving a diploma.
Do we proactively give alternatives if available?
We do, and in fact, I mean, this is a new policy, that would be a new experience for us, but definitely we would offer some alternatives to students.
I think the young lady from Lincoln tonight was a good example of how we can ameliorate those situations. I mean, it was a wonderful thing for, to get to go to Japan, but it put her in a bind when she came back and worked a way around it so she could graduate on time.
Did you say ameliorate?
Yeah, I believe I did.
Are y'all taking notes in this meeting? Be sure that word "ameliorate" is in your notes.
The Saurus, even, as we-
I'd like to see how the call of you spell it, too. We haven't voted on it yet, have we?
No, no.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
If you oppose. Okay, next item is new business, I have none.
No, sir.
Okay, new business brings us to reports, and we'll start with the different business reports.
All right, uh, we have a few things here. All right, you've got, um, we've got a lengthy sheet, board members, uh, with enrollment numbers on it, and you can see there in the middle of the page, um, we're up to almost right at eighty-one hundred students, eight thousand and ninety-eight students. So, uh, again, uh, as we've discussed already, the, uh, demographic projections from the last demographic study projected we would not be at that level, uh, until two thousand and eighteen nineteen, but we've already surpassed that.
Do you remember when we started here?
It was, uh, under eight thousand.
I think it was like seventy-nine. We were probably just talking-
At what year the projections?
No, this year, it started just in, this year, since it's under, uh, eight thousand.
Did it just keep growing?
Yep, moving upward. Uh, you have several items at your place, board members, you have a front back, uh, sheet that says two thousand and fifteen legislative goals. Uh, any of you who are at the, uh, OSDA meeting, one with us over there to Stillwater, that's the front sheet that lays out those legislative goals, but then the back part of that lays out the four thousand and fifteen legislative goals, uh, by the United Suburban Schools Association, um, and, uh, there's some similar ones on there, but some, uh, differentiation as well. So, uh, as we began to start talking to legislators and, uh, start having our legislative breakfasts, um, we, uh, talking to our legislators about a number of those issues. Uh, one issue that, um, has been a hot topic for schools across the state and across the nation, you don't have anything on this at your place, but I wanted to mention it, is, um, about E-Rate. That is a, uh, technological discount that school districts have enjoyed receiving for a number of years, really since the tech boom hit. Uh, it's, it's, uh, discounted rate for receiving, uh, technology access. Well, uh, that was due to expire or run out, uh, in the next year or so, so, so now fiscal year that is scheduled to run out. But I wanted to read you one paragraph that we might get some relief on that. Federal Communications Commission plans to propose a one point five billion dollar increase to the E-Rate program funding cap. FCC officials confirmed, uh, that, um, let's see, that the boost represents a sixty-two percent increase in annual spending making for a three point nine billion dollar funding cap. FCC will vote on the proposal at its December eleventh commission meeting, and if approved, it would make E-Rate the third largest source of federal funding flowing to schools. So we're kind of in hopes that that, um, goes through and it will help every, uh, school district, uh, across the nation if it does. Next item I wanted to mention to you is that Carver did a little, uh, uh, took suggestions and then took a little vote on what their mascot was going to be over at, uh, Carver Early Childhood Center, and the winner was the Carver Cubs. So, uh, does not take forward action, but I just wanted to, uh, run that by you guys, and if, uh, nobody sees any problems with that, we will give them the go-ahead to, uh, be the Carver Cubs.
You know, Cubs are historically not a-
Hey, watch it.
That's kind of a sad one.
Storyed past.
Not the Chicago Cubs.
They'll be good at remembering history.
But they're going to win the World Series now, right, with their new mayor?
Yeah, well, now there's investigation.
Allusion investigation, that's right. Uh, wanted to let you know that EPS, uh, totally United Way contributions collected were well over twelve thousand, twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, and, uh, we want to thank everyone who contributed to that dollar amount, goes to those that are in greatest need in our area to provide a hand up instead of a handout. And, um, one thing we did not get started, uh, because it was too late, but I want to initiate next year is a kind of a friendly competition amongst campuses and departments on, uh, United Way voluntary, uh, campaigns, and, uh, so I would anticipate that that number may, uh, increase, uh, in the years moving forward. Uh, wanted to also let you know, board members, about, um, an event that will be taking place in the spring. Uh, Keller Taylor, who runs the, uh, who's the general manager for the Event Center, came to see me and shared with me that the state of Oklahoma is rapidly approaching the sixtieth anniversary of the movie Oklahoma, nineteen fifty-five. Um, so there, uh, I guess it was a state-initiated, uh, program, but, um, some folks in the city have, um, developed a program where they're going to kind of, uh, go around the state to show the movie again, and they've got sponsors, uh, for that, uh, so it's no cost to ENEP to do that, um, but ENEP Event Center has volunteered to have those showings, but Keller brought it to me because he thought it would be a good fundraiser opportunity for the EPS Foundation, and so, um, I thought that'd be great idea, and by Jennifer Fields, uh, and the foundation, and she's going to take it to her board, and we think it'll be win-win for the foundation. Um, so the plan will be for, basically, the, our only obligation will be for the EPS Foundation and/or the campuses to sell tickets to those people that want to attend, uh, at least two showings, and with this, they, uh, those matinee, um, showings will take place as February the twenty-second, that's a Sunday afternoon, there'll be two matinee shows at the Event Center, actually, uh, at the, uh, Grand Ballroom in the Convention Center, is that the, uh, Grand Ballroom in the, uh-
The Super Bowl?
The, yeah, yeah, right. So, uh, they can hold seven, eight hundred, uh, people in there at one showing. So, uh, showings at one o'clock and four o'clock, that's Sunday afternoon, February the twenty-second, and the foundation should make forty-eight hundred to five thousand dollars, uh, probably, uh, that's if they sell them for three dollars a ticket, although those details haven't been worked out completely. But all that money from the foundation, which goes right back in to benefit, uh, students and teachers in our district, so it's win-win. And, uh, Keller said that if, uh, more tickets are sold and, uh, that location will hold for two, uh, showings, that we could possibly have one or more showings on previous day, on Saturday, February the twenty-first as well. I think that'll be win-win for everybody concerned.
Before you leave that topic, since you're from Texas, uh, have you learned our state song?
I'm working on it. I'm also not that committed, remember, but thanks for asking.
It's, it's Boomer Sooner, it's just too early.
It's not Boomer Sooner.
It just doesn't play very much these days.
All right, uh, let's see, uh, if you've surfed the websites of many school districts, uh, you might have seen where there's usually a tab on there for school board members, where they have pictures and a little paragraph of a bio as to when your, uh, term starts, when it finishes, how long you've been on the board, and a little sketch, uh, about you. Amber has had a request, uh, from someone to, uh, do that, and I had already been thinking about that as to why our district did not have that. I don't know of a six A district that does not have that, and, uh, a lot of smaller ones too. So I wanted to, uh, run that idea by you guys and, uh, see if you were all right with, uh, Amber starting to work on that, um, for our district. And what was, uh, what initiative this whole thing really was, uh, a request for board member email?
Well, I just had wanted, had wanted to check with Dr. Floyd before we did it, but add district emails that you've been assigned to the website, and then as we talked, he said he'd also like to do photos and bios, and we have photos of everyone, I believe, at our two newest board members, and we would be happy to make arrangements for you to have, which has said and done, um, at a local studio. So I think we've got most of everything we need, but I'm going to send an email to you as long as everyone, um, is agreeable and okay with that, ask a little bit of information, and we'll get that online.
So, uh, you already have pictures of everybody mandatory?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and they go, where to get that done?
Uh, we, we have, we usually use Motto Photo, they can turn those around, of course, very quickly, so we'll get, I'll have Babbie call you guys and set up a timeline. If you have a photo you're very fond of, I'd be open to that as well.
Trying to figure out what photo they would have.
Can you just go on the Facebook page?
Amber, you might check if you have one of me, because I know what's a Motto Photo.
Yeah.
Okay, I will level check. What, do you know?
I've got one that I can send you.
Uh, did we use maybe when you provided for the yearbook?
Yearbook?
For the high school yearbook?
You nodded off on meeting.
I will research that and make sure that we take care of it.
Okay.
All right, uh, this is, uh, good news, um, and I think it is, uh, an opportunity for us to, uh, to do our part on a couple of projects. One is the, uh, band boosters, the, uh, EHS band boosters, if I understood them correctly, kind of defunct for a little while, uh, but now they're, they're reinvigorated and re-energized and, uh, trying to do some, uh, things. They came to me, uh- They came to me here a few weeks ago to ask if we could partner with them in addressing what they see as one of their greatest needs, pressing need right now is a new van truck. And then on the heels of that, we also had a request from NOC to see if we would help, along with many other entities, partner with them on their baseball field renovation. And I'll read you some of the reasons why it would be a good thing for us to, to do that. Let's see, NOC and Enid High School Athletic Department have enjoyed a long working relationship that we believe has been very beneficial to both of us. Based on that successful working relationship, I believe we frequently combine our facilities to provide our student athletes the best opportunity to gain as much possible other athletic experiences. I also believe that, this is from Jerry Davis, a D at NOC. Also believe that better facilities contribute to a greater slice of, a greater sense of pride, effort, and large numbers of students for both of us. The following are some examples of how we have worked with each other in the past. Number one, prior to the construction of David Allen Memorial Ballpark, Enid High School and American Legion used Playland Field, that's the name of their baseball field, for their home games for many years. Number two, since the construction of David Allen, Enid High School continues to use Playland Field for junior varsity, junior high, and numerous summer league games. Number three, since the construction of David Allen, NOC has also enjoyed the opportunity to play a significant majority of our home games at David Allen. NOC allowed Enid High School to play all their varsity and junior varsity basketball games in the Mayby Center at NOC after closing your gym until the completion of the Mayby Center. That was for a five-year period, I understand, that we played our basketball games out there at no charge to our school district. Enid High School allowed our first-year softball program to play all of our home games at Pacer Field and David Allen Memorial Ballpark. And NOC has allowed all levels of Enid High School and junior high baseball teams usage of the Integris King Door facility on campus. So I talked to Bill Mayberry and Carl about that, and we have an overall concession fund that has roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. And so doesn't really take board action, but I, the superintendent, can allocate monies out of that. So I wanted to let you guys know that I felt it very important for us to do our part of both of the projects. So out of that fund, I've agreed to allocate ten thousand dollars for the van partnership of the van truck project and fifty thousand for the baseball field project at NOC, because they have more than done their part reciprocating for our students in the past years based on all of that. And it still leaves us significant dollars in the concession fund. So it's not going to significantly deplete the concession fund, but it also allows us to do our part to partnership with both parent group and NOC for both of the projects. So I think it is win-win for both parties. Any questions on that before we move on to a different topic?
Do you have an estimate on the van truck, what the total will be?
Yeah, Jim Gelsdorf did some research for them, and he thinks that they can, I don't have that with me right now, but it seemed like it was about forty...
Forty-eight to fifty thousand.
Somewhere in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range. And they were very, the van boosters are very appreciative to get, to have from us kind of a kickstart that program, and they feel like they get it done. The goal would be to have it in place for next fall, so they got now until they end up.
And they are trying to rejuvenate themselves. They're working hard.
Yes, they're very hard. Just...
Is that accurate, that it went defunct for a while?
It disappeared. I mean, I don't really know what...
There wasn't a lot of activity.
Yeah.
And you know, all those programs are, for the most part, parent-generated or adult-generated, and if you don't have a lot of internet people in there, it's, it's, those programs kind of down the vine, or at least go down. Anybody else on that topic? Board members, you've got a handout looks like this at your place. And this, we had a meeting recently or two about all this stuff that will go into that Administrative Services Building next door to our building. And I just wanted you to see a few pictures there of furniture and equipment and that type of stuff, and kind of what it'll look like once it gets done. So that's just FYI for you, it's gonna be, it'll be real nice when we get it all done. So that's the pictures of kind of what the structure will look like. All righty, we're gonna get to S O Os and S L Os in just one second. We are getting close to finalizing some dates on strategic planning. And tomorrow, as a matter of fact, I will be finalizing dates, I'll shoot you guys an email when we get that done. But one concrete date is February sixth and seventh, and that is the design team session, which is a two-day session. And if you'll recall, there are, they recommend that two board members represent the board on that design team session. It'll be about thirty-five to forty people, February the sixth and seventh, that's a Friday and a Saturday all day. So I thought it would be a good idea if we tried, we don't have to do it tonight, but if you want to, you can think about who those two board member representatives might be and who can allocate two entire days, Friday, that Friday and Saturday, February the sixth and seventh. You guys wanna do that now, or you want to think about it and just put it on the agenda for next month? We have volunteers.
Does that have to be voted on, or is it just...
No, we can just take volunteers if you want to. Just to work the way down the list here, the original process will begin in mid-January, and some of the dates I'm gonna finalize with Melody Pascal tomorrow. It'll be either, and this, this doesn't take board members, but Melody Pascal will be in here in our district to kick it off and do the community forums, either January the thirteenth or the following week, January the nineteenth, for a couple of days. And then we'll do the online surveys and distribute it to everybody, we'll have input that way, and then conduct focus group meetings over a couple of days, and then conduct that design team session of thirty-five to forty people, February the sixth and seventh.
We say all-day meeting, talking eight to five, both Saturday, Friday and Saturday?
Yes, it'll be all-day Friday and all-day Saturday, probably eight to five, a couple days.
Feeding us, right?
Oh, yeah.
All volunteer.
I tell you what, after spending two years on our vision program for the state, I would very much like to be involved.
I think that perspective would be good, to have that statewide perspective input for, into our plan as well. So we're volunteering, we have two volunteers.
I wonder if we fleshed out the rest of them.
We're taking recommendations right now, so if you have nominations that you would like to give me, I'll go ahead and jot those down now, or you can shoot me an email either way. I've already, we're gonna have a lot more people nominated for that thirty-five to forty people team design than we have right now, so we'll, we'll try to narrow it down, but I'm taking nominations now.
What information is needed on nominee? Do you need email and phone?
Yeah, just contact information.
Those are my nominations.
Maybe, maybe what, what area they would represent, are they parent, are they community member, are they business owner, and they have contact information.
I've got names, I just don't know if I have all the contact info.
You can shoot, you can shoot an email, that'd be fine. Or we can track it down. It's a little bit okay.
That's for you.
Appreciate that. Anybody else just wanna email us?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, that'd be fine. So we are taking nominations now, we've rolled it out to a couple of different organizations already. The communication team, what do we call that, the teacher communication team, and we're rolling out to the support communication team meeting as well. And I've shared that with administrators and some other groups as well. Just about that. Okay, last item in the superintendent's report is dealing with evaluations. And a hot topic out of the last legislative session, and I guess it's been discussed for some time, is what is, what is called, you know, we have an acronym for everything in education, so SLOs and SOOs, Student Learning Objectives and Student Outcome Objectives, depending on what category you fall under. I'm gonna let Melanie and Randy talk about this in just a minute, but the good news is that it was looking like there was a hard, fast deadline of December first for us to have a lot of things in place, but COSA sent out an email, this was November the seventh, that, I'll just read to you quickly, says, "We've contacted leadership staff at the State Department, and we have been advised that December first timeframe is merely a suggested date by which to take action. It is not an enforceable deadline. December first timeframe was a delayed timeline as a result of the delay of materials and training from OSBE. So SD staff has advised COSA and USA that there are no reporting requirements associated with December first timeline." So I'll turn it over to our two assistant superintendents to talk a little bit about teacher leader effectiveness overall and the S O Os and the S L Os.
I will give you a brief rundown of this, not try to bore you too much, and of course answer some questions at the end if you have any questions. It is this handout right here. If you'll look on the, the second page with the implementation side-by-side timeline, underneath the green box, the third, the third thing listed underneath there talks about roster verification and collecting the data. For the full implementation, which is two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, in order to have all of that ready for next year, we have to collect that data for this spring. And so it was supposed to be a year-long data collection, however, due to the fact that everything keeps getting pushed off, it looks like it will be the spring unless something changes in that. So that's kind of the world we're living in, is that unless something changes world. But if you look next at the pie graph on the next page, it just talks about, that's just a reminder about the Tulsa Model, which is what we use to evaluate our teachers. That's a qualitative measure where teachers go in and are, or principals go in and evaluate the teachers. But then there's the quantitative measures, the OAMs, which were implemented last year, and Melanie talked about those. The VAM and the SLO slash SOOs, that's the part that we're working on now, that's the last part of the implementation for the one hundred percent. The VAMs, basically, if you'll look at the next page below that, it's in the tested grades for reading and math in grades four through eight, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and English III. If you teach one of those grades or subject areas, you'll have a VAM. It's a value-added model. It's given, that number is given to us by the state based on test results, and so that becomes part of the teacher's evaluation. Any other teacher that does not qualify in one of those areas for a VAM, that's where the SLOs and SOOs come in, play, and so that's a lot of other teachers. So if you look at the next page, I know I'm going through this kind of quick, so if you have any questions. But an SLO is a measurable, long-term academic goal informed by available data that a teacher team sets at the beginning of the school year for all students. Basically, an SLO is an academic measure. And so, say, a first-grade teacher, they, they give their pre-assessment in, in reading, and then you measure the growth of the student, and based on that, they get an SLO. And that's any, any subject or grade where academic performance can be measured. So, and then the SOO is, is an objective outcome, and so what that is, basically, the easiest way to explain that is a behavior. So if you have, like the PE teacher, they might track behaviors or something if they don't have something necessarily academic to measure. So that's the difference between the SLO and the SOO. Some of that will sound like the other academic measures that we talked about last year, and it, it's one of those things where some acad, other academic measures can be SLOs, but not SLOs can be other academic measures. So we're gonna have to tweak some of that as we look at it. We do feel very fortunate in Enid, we use Star Reading and so, and Star Math, and so we believe we'll be able to set up a lot of those learning targets through our Star Renaissance product that we use, and so we feel pretty confident with that. It is something that teachers have a lot of control over with the other academic measures, and we want obviously for that to continue. Teachers will definitely have input in the SLO, SOO process, but we also know to make it fair to those teachers that have, get the VAMs, we're gonna have to really kind of look at that from the administrative level to make sure that everybody's looked at equitably on that. So the next page just shows which teachers and leaders receive what score. It's just kind of a repeat of, basically, if they're not in one of those pre-mentioned grades or testing subjects, they will get a SLO or an SOO. So, and then if you look at the last page, really, this may be the most important piece of it for you to know, is that we believe there may be some changes to this legislatively. However, right now, there are no changes, so we're preparing just like nothing will change. On November twenty-fourth, we're meeting with the principals, we're gonna roll out our initial plan to the principals. Obviously, there's a lot of questions that will come up from that, so we're gonna develop and discuss those questions. And then after that meeting, Melanie and I will take the, the questions that they have, and we'll dig and find some answers. And then we're gonna come back on December ninth, and we're gonna follow up with principals. A lot of those questions will be around, what's it look like, what's an SOO look like for a counselor? You know, some of those areas that we have to go back and identify. So, and then we'll provide some additional information. We're gonna have to look at our STAR data. One of the things we have to look at is historical data to make sure that we're being fair to everybody. So we're coming up on our second testing window for STAR, which will give us student growth percentages, which we will use, we believe, to develop a lot of those SLOs. However, we need to make sure that, that we're getting good information from that. So we really need that second testing window to come up before we kind of start setting our student growth targets. And then obviously, we're just gonna have to determine if additional meetings are needed after that, and that will be based on understanding from principals and feedback from teachers and different things like that. So that's our plan as of right now, unless something major changes legislatively. But it, but having a quantitative portion is part of the waiver, and so we believe at least some type of quantitative portion will stay in there. We just don't know exactly what that's gonna look like.
I believe that that issue of SLOs and SOOs will be getting a good amount of discussion in this next legislative session. Dennis Casey was one of the legislators that was at our School Board Association meeting the other night, and what was that the one?
It was at both.
He was at both, yeah.
It was both.
That's right. And I believe we have his ear, and he understands the issue and how difficult it is to make equitable the VAMs and the SOOs and S, SLOs and SOOs. So I anticipate they'll get some discussion after the legislative session, and we hope that, that we'll see the need to either revise that a little bit, or I have sense to say come up with a better plan, because that's all that has happened statewide over the last several years, it looks like, is revision to a plan, and revision to a plan, and revision to a plan, such that it's hard to get your feet into what the plan is. But nevertheless, I see a lot of issues with equity here in this plan, but nevertheless, we're gonna try to work our way through what we have to work with right now, until we inform otherwise.
What are...
Something, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What is a district? What, what is your viewpoint on the inequality of the SLO, SOO, VAM, if I remember all three?
The inequality, or?
Yes, I mean, because obviously, there, there's issues with, if you're looking at, say... Well, obviously, it's gonna be more in the skill and behavior base, as opposed to a 10th-grade algebra teacher, and so on and so forth. So, obviously, there's issues with, with every model, but if we had our way, how would you tweak it? How would you suggest?
Well, I've been a part of a TLE focus group, and they've been kind of holding meetings across the state, and what we recommended is, the law requires right now a qualitative and a quantitative piece. If we're able to influence legislation this spring, then we're recommending that they get rid of the quantitative piece, because it will never be equitable. I mean, we can come up with an algorithm, which they've already done, they wrote a request for proposal at the State Department, they had a company develop the algorithm. They'll say that it's based on models that other states are using, but other states have different dynamics and different variables. So, a testing teacher compared to a non-testing teacher, they just will never, ever be equitable. The position we're in right now is that the state has the algorithm that they're using with the testing teachers, we're tasked with the responsibility of creating equity for those teachers that are non-tested. And so, it's very difficult to do, because, and we talked about this the last time we talked about academic issues, we don't have anything aligned right now in the state. So, when you have a lack of clear alignment, it's very hard to be equitable.
So, how do you qualitatively evaluate teachers that don't fit into that mold?
Well, we recommend that the qualitative evaluation is actually a better evaluation model, because it includes coaching. And teaching is complex, it's a complex profession. It would be similar if we wanted to add a quantitative measure to measure what doctors do or what nurses do. So, because we're in the social sector, and we have all different variables that come into play for how we're asking kids to grow. Now, what I would say, maybe we don't have it in law, but we have a system in place currently that we use to measure student growth. It's not part of a teacher evaluation, but we look at it to see if kids are growing, if they're increasing their reading level, for instance. So, I would not recommend that we do completely away with quantitative measures when we're looking at assessment of students, because those can be very helpful.
You're speaking of the scoring.
Right.
When you're talking about production of an item in business industry, it's relatively easy to implement a quantitative piece in that, you know, you're producing X number of widgets last year versus this year. Education is different than producing widgets. You know, we're producing learners at all different kinds of levels and stages and degrees that is very, very difficult to quantify. So, the qualitative and the quantitative being rolled into one evaluation system is a very, very, very complex issue, and very different than producing blueberries or widgets or any other production line business model. And that's the issue that we have in education sometimes, is that legislators especially often want to dump business models and practices onto education, but we all know that education and building widgets is two vastly different things. So, I don't know the answer, but I know that it's not easy to equitably equate those things.
And I agree with that. I, when I hear wanting to possibly get rid of one of the tools that we use to evaluate, to me, I mean, obviously, they are complex, but I think you, instead of possibly looking to do away, you continue to try and work and fine-tune, because the output of a nice student, to me, having a value of personal growth of a student and their behavior improving is, you know, just as important as certain aspects of their, of their academic careers. So...
I think there are a lot of benefits to the whole SOO and SLO pieces, just like you said, there's great benefit in that, in taking the kid from here and seeing them grow to here, that's exactly what we're about in education. So, theoretically, that is very valid.
And we're doing it now. So, the SLO and SOO, and inspired this alphabet soup that we keep brewing, there are things that we're doing and measuring student growth currently, it's just, does that then factor into a teacher's evaluation?
Were you gonna add something?
Well, I was gonna say the same thing, we're, we really are looking at student growth. I mean, and we're, and I think the teachers are here, we're excited to give that next benchmark window. As a matter of fact, I was looking at it today going, we should hurry up and get here, because I like looking at that, and you can see the growth, and we have those schools that are giving it previous, you know, they're giving, giving some of those benchmarks monthly, and you can see growth in those students, and that's exciting, and they're pulling that out and looking, and that's adding to what we're doing. But again, how you quantify that and put that into the evaluation, I think that's the part that we're all skeptical about.
Well, and speaking of the teachers, I guess the last question I have is on the, on the plan, on the, on the backside of this, the steps that you're rolling out, I don't see anything about meeting with teachers, so I'm assuming you're, you're wanting this to be a trickle-down communication, you, central office to principals, principals to their staff at each campus.
Yeah. And really, some of that will be developed as, as the understand, I mean, this is pretty, this is very complex, and Melanie and I both had to go, you only allowed a certain amount of people to go to the training, Melanie and I went to that, and then you gotta come back and research it and everything, and so, we're trying to filter through and make sure that the principals have a good basic foundation of it, so that they can get back and tell it to the teachers that they have an understanding. So, part of the timeline of getting it to the teacher will depend on the understanding of the principals and how we can articulate that to them.
Well, and that's my fear is, is maintaining the same message and being proactive in communicating it, too, because if I'm a teacher and I'm, my evaluation is gonna be changing, it's the fear of the unknown.
Right.
And how do we, as a district, ensure that the same message is said to every single teacher throughout the district?
We prepare...
That is part of the key issue right there, is that the state, in the short period of time that I've been here and researched what has gone on over the last several years, and what we're trying to implement now, is the piece that they're missing is the appropriate implementation time period. When you roll something out, you generally roll it out in pilot format to try it out and tweak things to get revised and improved before you roll it out to a mandate for everybody. That piece is just, seems to be born to almost everything that is rolled out by the State Department over the last several years, in my opinion. So, that is one change I would make.
I just wanna address how we train, and we were asked to just kind of be brief, because we didn't know how much you guys wanted to delve into that.
I'm sorry, apparently, I'm long-winded.
But no, I appreciate, I mean, Randy and I absolutely appreciate your questions, because it gives us an opportunity to talk about what we do. And so, we train principals and we prepare materials, this is part of a PowerPoint that we give to them. So, we train principals, we also train our instructional coaches, because they then, principals will go train their staff if they feel comfortable. If they don't feel comfortable, then Randy and I have even gone out to schools and done training on TLE, and then our instructional coaches are also trained, and they can train in large groups, or they can train with their PLCs, they can do small groups as well.
One of the scary things about this, one of the reasons why we're moving kind of slow into this, and, is because we both went to different trainings on different days, and they were different, even though they were supposed to be the same. And so, same materials, but different messages in both. So, we do want the principals to feel comfortable enough to be able to explain it to their staff, because ultimately, it does affect the teachers, and we want the teachers to know, feel comfortable with it. So, and that's the piece that really is a little bit different than the OAM, because the OAM, the teachers have a lot of input in that, and we want them to have that. But with this, because of the VAM, those teachers have no control over it, we feel like, at the central office, we need to really make sure that we're kind of controlling what that is, so that it is fair across the district. And so, we're moving pretty slow with this, but faster than a lot of people.
I think we have true equity across our district, but when I'm looking, I'm sitting there looking at first graders' numbers here, and we have some teachers teaching seventeen, and we have some teachers teaching twenty-seven.
You're right.
And, you know, there can't be equity in that situation, as far as some stated criteria that says, here's our, we're gonna analyze these teachers.
Right.
Which is why we would like to have input from teachers about what is quantitative, about how we're measuring student growth, because that, because we are looking at those things. We're really focusing on the individual needs of students and trying to measure how they're learning across the year and then across the years. But in terms of turning these numbers, because the state will ask for a number, it will be attached to teacher certification, and we will be delivering that to the State Department, and they will not know that one first-grade teacher had seventeen and another first-grade teacher had twenty-four. So, you know, we, we're really going slow on this, because the State Department is still trying to figure out exactly what it is they want us to do, frankly, and we're thinking there may be changes to this this session.
And you add to that the whole teacher shortage issue statewide, and that issue that you're talking about, high student numbers, is probably gonna get worse when it gets better statewide.
Well, it's, it's the same schools that we see growth in each time we see this chart too.
Anybody else before we move on? That's the extent of what I have for superintendent's report, so.
Next report is from Mr. Wade, for those in our vast audience, Mr. Wade is our real advisor for a second. Come in.
Thanks, sir. I don't have the details on all of the Veterans Day programs that were done in schools last week, but I do know that Emerson invited our operations sports squadron commander to speak at their program. He also told me that a girl spoke, her dad was killed in action while deployed, so I'm sure that was a very moving presentation.
It was very moving, yes, they both had their dad.
Yeah, and also, last week, the base sent out care packages, holiday care packages to all of our deployed, and students from Eisenhower created thank-you cards that went into those care packages. So, last week was a great week for ENID public school students to show appreciation to our active duty and veterans, and that's a wonderful thing, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think we have Veterans Day programs on every campus, and I made it for six different ones, and had a big event out at the Excalibur Center, and a lot of, a lot of good things going on.
Yeah.
Good for kids' experience, I'm sure.
Definitely. Thank you.
They did?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all, well, board comment?
I just was looking at our enrollment sheet, and I'm glad we have a balance in the building fund, because looking at the total enrollment of some of our elementary schools, it looks as though it's time to consider more room, and seven-twenty-one at Garfield already, and I know, I know some of these are full, I don't know about all of them, but I don't know if it means we need to shift boundaries, which is, strikes scare into a lot of people, but either shifting boundaries or more room somewhere, but I just, I know that on some of these, they're full and running over, so I was glad to see there was a little money in the building fund and hope that we're looking at that.
Well, I think both of those are gonna be on the table for discussion during strategic planning, is boundaries and what we can do with this growth, because even if we shift boundaries, it won't be long until we're out of room everywhere, if this, if our growth continues. So, I think boundaries and space and how we deal with growth and additional rooms are all gonna be on the table for discussion.
About seven-twenty-one. I mean, it really, literally is...
We talked about maybe seven-fifty being absolute maximum, or something like that.
And I think they've been a little higher than that, I mean, obviously, every classroom is full, right, or has students in it, and now, full is kind of relative to how many kids you have sitting in the classroom, but all of the classroom space is used at this point. And that's pretty, pretty standard across all of our elementary schools. We have very few actual classroom space left, so that's a very good point.
I don't think y'all probably got the numbers we're talking about. Pretty soon, if you leave, if somebody wants to get my copy, I'll be happy to share it, you can take copies of it and share it with everybody in groups, because it shows your tool, our school, and all that stuff. Going on, well, first of all, any more board comments? Colin, you're on the roll.
I don't know what I gotta...
Did you have an energy drink before you came out?
Finally got over my bout with Ebola.
Yeah, you had some catching up to do.
It's well, again.
To go on through the agenda, though, the next regular meeting is Monday, December 15. We'll be in the district's boardroom at 6:00 PM, going on to the next item. Are we needing to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, are we gonna stay here?
Yeah, we'll just stay here.
Okay, this is when we have to excuse y'all, then, so, cancel your executive session.
Glad to have you all, thank you.